So the drivers are very excited about that as well. We look forward to get off with the district and drivers together. Thank you.
Great, you want to go? Awesome. Thank you for doing awesome job, Chris. And this is from Hunter, recognize.
Thank you.
Saving from that day, right?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for following instructions and listening to all my conversations in the morning and telling you how to arrive and depart the bus safely.
Okay.
All right? Continue. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Oh.
Where would you like us?
You're gonna face me. Sure. Can we have you hold, Mr. Chris, can you hold the certificate?
I often excuse him, make me look thinner. Stand like the girl on News 12.
Which D L.
Yeah.
And since everybody that works at school transportation gets up really early in the morning, we're going to say, of course, you're, well, you're, we'd be more than happy for you to say what you also understand.
Yeah, I go to bed early in the country, so. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
The next person we would like to recognize is our custodial supervisor Fred Horton. Three years ago, with the support of the Board of Education, we began a program to get staff members who were interested certified as emergency medical technicians. So a number of district employees on their own time chose to attend the training, pretty extensive training. It went for, it was about six months, right Fred? And it's a lot of work, but a number of people completed the training. We've had two classes here so far run by Suffolk County Emergency Medical Services, and Fred was in the first class that we had. A couple of times since then, Fred has happened to come across situations where his skills were of use. One was at the lemonade stand a couple of years ago at Murphy Junior High School where Fred had been the chief custodian at the time. And just recently, last week, he was on his way to work in the morning and driving on Nichols Road in Selden, and came across a pretty bad traffic accident, and a woman trapped inside the car, and the car seemed to be in, that it might burst into flames imminently. So Fred, along with a pediatrician, right, who had happened to stop, helped get the woman out of the car and run the first aid and made a big difference in that woman's life. So it didn't happen on district property, but we're proud of you nonetheless. So we just want to say thank you. Now you have to get your picture taken.
Am I gonna get a picture?
Yeah.
Well, Freddie. Fred has to get up early in the morning.
Yes, yes. I gotta get back to work.
So at our last board meeting, which was in February, we had a number of people come and speak on behalf of the Three Village Swim Club, asking for the district to allow the pool to be used with the, with the club. And we agreed at that point that we would allow the club to use the pool, however, we were going to restrict it just to district residents, and then we would reevaluate that. I want to say that the club has done an absolutely outstanding job in terms of health and safety protocols, and we thank them for all of their efforts. As a result, we are going to open it up to non-residents immediately, effective tomorrow, so that they can begin to use the pool as an entire club together. So we just want to thank them for their support in following all of the protocols. Thank you.
Moving on to minutes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for February 10th, 2021? Mr. Vizzo, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to reports, B, student representative report, Jesse B. Harf.
Hi, this is working out awesome. All right, so we have a lot to celebrate this month, so I'm gonna skip over the part in my student report where I voiced my concerns and go right to the positive news. The student government hosted a virtual raffles for a cause event and raised over $3,000 to the Matriana family. A huge thank you to the Matriana family for televising this live from their home, and a thank you to board member M.C. Joseph Matriano. We are now moving into election season for student government board positions. Senior night seems to have happened in some form or another for many winter sports teams, which is great. Badges are being given out to athletes and musicians' parents and guardians so they can watch them play and perform, and most importantly, we, the football team, did not have to shovel the fields. I'm sure this was a relief to Mr. Finney as well, because I'm sure that would not be a good picture in his mind, and there would also probably be some insurance problems with that. I'm not even sure if we are in the fall or spring sports season right now, it's a bit confusing to me, but just happy this is the season. Repeating some thank yous, first to P T S A for the snowflake ball to benefit senior scholarships. Also, we heard there are talks of pep rallies, barbecues, and some sort of prom. The students are looking forward to learning more and are very happy about that. Another shout out for that mom's group that started the Luminaire Bags. They have rebranded themselves as the mother, as the mother flockers, flockers, I want to stress that. They are out and about flocking the seniors with flamingos. There are pictures of seniors and senior parents smiling everywhere. Thank you to Mrs. Matriano, Mrs. Henry, Mrs. Mortella, Mrs. Giacovino, who's right there, Mrs. Binadi, Mrs. Ceseza, and the co-flocking chair is Mrs. Hershener and my mom, right there. Plus, any of the parents driving these flocks around. I think I only get to speak two or three more times at these meetings. I think you, I think you all take the time to make this a great experience for the Three Village students in all grades across the district, so I want to close with a thank you to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Next, we'll move on to the preliminary budget presentation. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you. As we had mentioned at a previous board meeting, our proposed budget this year will exceed the tax cap, which will require a 60% of the voters who vote to vote yes in order for it to pass. The reason for this, we went into it a little bit last time, I'll talk a little more about it now, is what, what we have been doing this year with having students in school five days a week is something that almost no school district anywhere, not just on Long Island or in New York, has been able to do. And it wasn't that we, you know, just happened to get lucky, and, and it was, it was not just a lot of work between our staff, the support from our board, but also, especially, not also, especially the students and parents. It was a real team effort. But it also cost a lot of money. And what we heard going back to last summer was, you know, you have money in reserves, you should use it if that's going to help get our kids back at school. And that's what we did. Most of them, we've, we've spent so far about six and a half million dollars on COVID-related expenses. Most of that is on additional instructional staff, and what that's enabled us to do is make smaller class sizes, which has allowed us to keep the six-foot distancing within the classrooms. So when we've had a student or a staff member test positive for COVID, it hasn't necessarily required much in the way of quarantining of other people. Some, but not a lot. And, you know, we've all seen in the papers, schools, you know, around the country, around New York and around Long Island, where they'll have to close an entire school, maybe for a week, and that's when they're on, on a hybrid schedule, and they've had to do that. We haven't had to close any of our schools across the board at all, anytime this year. So, but it's that additional money that it costs to have all that additional instructional staff. So now going forward to, and that's, then we have the additional cleaning personnel, the cleaning supplies, the desk shields, the PPE, the IT equipment, all the Chromebooks, all of the, the support for all the Chromebooks, all of that kind of stuff. So now going forward to next year, I mean, I think we can be safe in assuming that at least at the start of next school year, we'll have to be offering some sort of remote program, at least as, as an offer. I mean, we haven't decided anything yet, we don't know, we, the governor hasn't decided anything about next school year yet, but I think that's a fair assumption to make, and we certainly have to be prepared for that to happen next year. We don't want to go backwards. We don't want to get to September and say, we don't have enough money in the budget now to support all that additional instructional staff, so now we'd have to go on a hybrid. We don't even want to consider that. So what we have to do is we have to build that into our budget. And also, of the money that we've taken from reserves this year to support all of those initiatives that we've done to get our kids back at school, the special legislation that the governor approved earlier this school year to allow that also requires that that money get paid back to our reserves over a five-year period. So we have to start paying that back this coming up year. So all of that needs to get into next year's budget. So, and that's the reason why we, we, in order to do that, we need to go above the tax cap in order to do that. Now, every year, the tax cap, even though it's still commonly referred to as the 2% tax cap, it's not 2%. One of the factors can be 2%, but in fact, this coming up year, it's not even that. But the, the cap varies district to district and year to year. Our cap for this coming up year is 1.37%. So that only provides for an additional approximately $2.2 million in our budget. We need more than that in next year's budget to be prepared, to start paying back reserves and to be prepared for school to open next year. So that, hence going above the cap. The budget that we will be proposing is just under a half a percent more than that. It would be a 1.85% increase on the tax levy, but it is above the cap, so it needs the 60% of the vote. So what does that mean to the, to the average homeowner? Well, the one point the tax cap compliant budget would have cost our Three Village homeowner an additional $164 for the year. This budget that we're putting forward increases that by $58 more to, it would be, the average tax increase for next year would be $222. So what's happening with state aid? Well, we don't know. Our state aid was reduced this year, and going forward to next year in the governor's budget proposal, it would go down a little bit more. So that has to get accounted for as well. That's all, all part of it. Today, the House just approved the federal stimulus bill as, you know, revised by, by the Senate, so that, and that is, I guess, is supposed to be signed by the president on Friday. Of course, we're hoping for more money from that. That would be great. However, let's just go back and look at when these kind of things have happened before, and federal money has come in to help schools. So we could look back to 2008, when we had the big recession in 2008. So what happened? Well, it was, it was called the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and it was ARA funds. And what that did is that, that was to make school districts whole in their, in their budgets for that year. But here's the way, and this is typical, I don't know what will happen in this case, but typically, and the way it happened last time, was the state tells us our state aid, I'm making up a number, $30 million. However, we're gonna put a minus $1 million in there because we don't have the money. And then they say, oh, well, here's federal money of $1 million to replace that, so you're getting all your money. That million dollars that came from the federal government is not an additional million for us, it's to replace a million dollars of what the state would have given us. So what happened in that case? Well, the money was there for two years, and then in 2010, that money ended. Federal government said, okay, you got all your money now, but the state didn't have the money. Now, now they were banking on that money. So what they did is they, the first year, they called it a deficit reduction assessment of that minus, and then after that, the name changed to gap elimination adjustment. And for us, from 2010 to 2016, that gap elimination adjustment was in place, and just Three Village alone, our state aid was reduced by $32.4 million over those years. So what happened then? Well, our board told us, administration, don't, oh, by the way, we also had to cut over 200 employee positions during that time. We had to increase class sizes, cut electives, cut sports, we had to do all that. So the board told us, don't let that happen again, start preparing if this kind of thing happens again. So we did. That's why this year, when every other school district is doing hybrid schedules and all of that kind of stuff, we've had kids in five days a week, and we want to do that again next year, and we want to prepare for that for, in the future as well. So that's all part of going above the cap, and that's why we're proposing the budget that way. We, the board said, well, that's one thing to go above the cap, but it still needs to be below 2%, and it is. So the budget vote will be on May 18th, we'll have at the March 24th board meeting, we'll go over a little of the staffing details on next year's budget, and hopefully by then, we have more information on state aid and any federal money that's coming in. As of right now, normally, the budget is the third Tuesday in May, we're assuming it's going to be the same this year, it was changed last year, but I don't think that'll happen again. We don't know yet the format, if it's going to be back to normal. Remember, last year, it was all mail-in, and we had to hand count. We're thinking that it'll probably be more back to normal, meaning at Ward Millville High School, Jolinas and Murphy Junior High Schools, we don't know that yet, but that's what we're assuming since we've had, we had Election Day back in November, and that was more normal, and considering the size of that, you know, how many people voted, I, I think it's probably a safe bet that we'll be back to normal voting for this budget vote. And that's, that's all I had for tonight. As I said, we're awaiting a lot of information on state aid and federal money. So unless there are any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jeff. Items for board discussion, seeing none, we'll move on to items for board action for policy. And we'd like to ask Dr. Ballen to come up?
Sure. Jeff, it's hard to follow that. So the first policy you have before you is 0101, gender-neutral, single occupancy bathrooms. All the policies before you this evening are basically statutorily driven, so they're, we're obligated to adopt some policy regarding each of these topics. The first one on gender-neutral, single occupancy bathrooms requires all single-use bathrooms open to the public to be gender-neutral, with signs denoting that as well. In addition, any single occupancy bathroom used by students must have appropriate feminine hygiene products. That's 0101. Policy 4000 is student learning standards and instructional guidelines. Again, statutorily driven, this brings our policy into compliance with all of the Commissioner Regulations 100.1. It basically deals with moving from the old learning standards to the next-gen learning standards for ELA and, and math. It has provisions for equity inclusive, inclusivity and diversity in the policy. 4500, excuse me, 4511, textbook selection and adoption. Again, we are obligated to have a policy on textbook selection. This one also deals with equity, inclusivity, and diversity. It includes also, for the first time, a definition of a textbook to include electron, resources that are not just a physical copy, but other sorts of copies as well. It also includes provisions that materials should fairly represent the many ethnic and cultural aspects of our, our society and how it contributes to the American heritage and fabric, and, as well as racial, ethnic, cultural, and religious makeup of our country. The next policy, 8130, school safety plans and teams. Again, we're all obligated to have these, this policy. This policy basically is just a little structural reorganization of the policy, as well as directing us to prepare for continuity of instruction in the event of an issue like a pandemic. It also cleans up some grammatical and organizational matters as well. Related to it, 8131, pandemic planning. Pandemic planning is new for the district, but again, we, the state says that we now have to prepare for pandemic planning. I think we have done an outstanding, exceptional job with that, but this just brings a policy in writing, and we are, have been, and we will continue to be in full compliance of it. And finally, you have 9700 professional learning and staff development. This is the state's shift in alignment with the Commissioner's Regulations, going from professional development to professional learning and professional growth for our staff. This brings us into alignment with the Commissioner regs 100.2, and it also includes a provision for culturally, culturally responsive professional learning for our staff. Those are the policies before you for consideration.
Any questions? No? I think we were gonna move those tonight, right? Yes, so motion to move? Mr. Vizzo, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to E, appointment of construction manager?
The recommendation is to appoint school construction consultants. What we're doing now is we approve them on a project, now that we don't have a bond issue or anything like that, we appoint them projects as, as we need them. They've done work for us all the way back to the 2007 bond, and they are fantastic.
Okay. Dr. Kerman, Ms. Bevlinka, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. Approval of health and welfare service contracts?
We have four contracts with four other districts. This is for Three Village resident students that attend private schools located within those districts, the, those districts that these contracts are with, provide any health services those students may need, and then they bill us, and we do the same the opposite way.
Thank you. Have a motion? Ms. Gish, Mr. Vizzo, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions? None? Motion passes. Acceptance of donations?
We have four donations. The first is a Carl Nilling full-size violin, I don't know if Carl Nilling is a good violin maker, but hopefully he is. Case and bow donated by one of our choral teachers, Mr. De Persio. We have a check for, of $1,000 donated by Nissan 112 to the Jolinas Theater Arts Program. A scholarship check for $250 donated by Munistat Services, they're our fiscal advisor, to go into the Ward Millville High School Scholarship Fund. And a donation of 45 books for the Minnesotaki Library from Mrs. Stewart, who is the parent of a fourth-grade student in the building, Skylar.
Thank you. If I have a motion, please? Mrs. Gish, Dr. Kerman, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. H, declaration of surplus equipment?
We have, from Satorkin School, a, an old television set and five microscopes that are all in nonusable conditions.
Dr. Kerman, Ms. Bevlinka, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes.
The next item, which is I, is the contract of agreement with the district clerk, March 31st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021.
31st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021. This evening, we will be accepting the resignation for purposes of retirement of our district clerk, Kathleen Samponia, who has dutifully and wonderfully served our district for many years, so we will be very sorry to see Ms. Samponia leave. However, I am very happy to announce that our new district clerk, effective March 25th, actually, it will be April, March 31st, let me get the date correct, sorry about that, March 31st, will be our own current board president, Inger Germano. So we congratulate both of them, and Inger, Mr. Germano would like to read a statement at this time.
It is with sadness, but also excitement, that I announce tonight that I submitted my letter of resignation from the Three Village Central School District Board of Education effective March 30th, 2021. As you may be aware, Kathleen Samponia, the district clerk, has announced her retirement from the district. As a result of the district have posted an opening for the position of district clerk, I have applied for the position and completed the interview process. The board has completed their interviews and has determined that I am the most qualified candidate for the position. Therefore, March 30th will be my last day as a member of the Board of Education. I want to thank the community for all of your support as a board member throughout the years. It has been a great privilege and honor to serve on the board. Nine years serving as district clerk pro temp, and most recently as president of the Board of Education. I would also like to thank the board members and superintendent for their support and this opportunity. I look forward to continuing serving the community and the district in another role. Thank you.
We offer our congratulations to both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, either?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Don't move.
Dr. Kerman?
Set.
Ms. Gish?
Reluctant.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? One abstention? Motion passes. Thank you very much. J, Approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Three Village Central School District and the Three Village School Administrators Association regarding a change in the annual limit of unused vacation days for payment?
Yes, this is, this is an MOA, who, the employees identified in Schedule A, due to their work with the COVID-19 tracking and contact tracing, have some additional days to purchase back, so this is the MOA reflecting that.
Thank you. Have a motion? Dr. Kerman, Ms. Bevlinka, all in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
Abstentions? Motion passes. K, Approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Three Village Central School District and the United Public Service Union Maintenance and Operations Unit, adding a title to the salary schedule?
This is an MOA, adding the position to the MNO contract for Network and Systems Specialist 1, which was in need that the three districts had, and will be able to fill now as a result of this entering in the MOA.
Thank you. Have a motion? Mrs. Gish, Mr. Vizzo, all in favor? Opposed abstentions?
Yes.
Motion passes. L, Personnel Matters, one instructional? Have a motion? Nothing? Right.
Nothing unusual with this, though.
Have a motion, please? Ms. Bevlinka, Ms. Gish, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed abstentions? Motion passes.
Mr. Germano, just so you know, we have just, I'd like to recognize and congratulate the approval for the retirement of the following employees that we just approved. Sadly, we're, you know, we're in that time of the year where we're losing some of our most longstanding employees. I just want to name the few. First, Ken Preston, Virginia Ferraro, Debbie Rikowski, Natalie Lilivois. Unfortunately, we'll all be retiring at the end of the school year, and we wish them health and happiness into retirement.
Have a motion, please? Mr. Vizzo, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions?
Yes.
Motion passes. M, Recommendations to Committee of Special Education for the date stated? Have a motion? Ms. Bevlinka, Ms. Gish, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. Recommendations to Committee for Preschool Special Education for the date stated? Ms. Gish, Mr. Vizzo, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. Information, items of interest? Anyone have anything? No? Okay, now we'll move on to public participation. Okay, we have two that have been emailed in to the Three Village Administration and Board of Education from Stephanie Werner, 35th May, Floraleen, East Satoriket. "As we enter the uncharted territory of this administration and state examinations during a global pandemic, it is of utmost importance that parents are advised on how students will be distanced during the testing periods. As most are well aware, we have considerable number of families that favor the choice of opt-out testing. In the past, these students have been assembled in a large gathering places available in the schools, while those taking the exams remained in the classrooms. Obviously, at the present time, there is no longer an option, particularly on the elementary level, where large groups of students, grades three to six, cannot be held together in the auditorium. Transparency is essential at this point of time concerning the placement of those who chose to choose to participate in the exams and those in the opt-out group. Has the planning for this scenario begun? How would this be handled while strictly adhering to all COVID-19 protocols, including distancing, masking, and the use of shields? There isn't, there is no anxiety related to the example of both students and parents during the school year not hindered by the contagious virus. When will testing procedures for the school year be released to the parents? Time is of the essence."
As has been our practice since the start of school, students have been appropriately distanced at six feet, and masks have been worn. We would continue to do that through all testing periods, and in fact, today, all of the principals at the elementary and second, junior high school level did send correspondence to parents regarding the three through eight testing. We, at this point, will be collecting the number of opt-out, the parents who have chosen to opt their students out of the testing procedures, and I can guarantee that all of our students will be six feet apart. However, for us to say what will occur in each particular building may be somewhat different only because it will depend on the numbers and the space capacity and how we handle that. However, we will follow those protocols with fidelity, as we have since the start of school, that I can assure everyone.
Okay, we have one last one. It's from Icaterina Boudreaux. "My name is Icaterina Boudreaux, I'm a Three Village resident with my son at Murphy Junior High and a son at Mount Elementary. I would like to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent for opening the Ward-Melville Pool to Three Village Swim Club. For the past three weeks, our Three Village Swim Club swimmers and staff have met exceeded safety protocols. Our staff has already talked with Coach Gordon to ensure that the Ward-Melville Girls varsity swimmers are given proper time to exit the pool area before Three Village Swim Club begins practice. Now I urge you to please reconsider allowing the remainder of the Three Village Swim Club members access to the Ward-Melville Pool. The split schedule of swimmers and coaches is creating an unhealthy culture. Our children have never been separated before by their defining school districts and now aware of it, and in view of the special treatment. Our district have been doing amazing from day one, being in school and in person for five-day schools. Satchem and our districts were the only ones that didn't have access to pools. Now that Satchem District has reopened their pools for all Satchem Swim Club members, not limited to the Satchem School District children, Satchem can do it, I'm confident Three Village can do it. I appreciate the time and effort the school board puts into protecting the safety of our children, and I do believe we can find a compromise and happy middle, even if you do not think you are ready to let us in as a team yet. Maybe Friday, Saturday, and Sunday can be an option for the whole team to be together. Thank you for your time, service, and consideration. Sincerely, Icaterina Boudreaux." That's the last one. Anybody else would like to speak?
Losing something. Yeah.
No?
I don't hear anything.
I'm sorry? Anybody else would like to speak? No? Seeing none? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Dr. Kerman, Mrs. Gish?